I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. First item on the agenda is approval of the Alderman's board of business session. Amendments, and I gave you some amendments, basically amending the new business to indicate that the Park Board was spending the money on the first rig golf, so that you moved ambiguity. And, I thought there was one where there were the word precedence versus precedent dealt with it on whole business. We'd be setting a precedent with the T. Can we take a motion to approve what was amended?
Go ahead.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Next up, the bills list.
Let's paint the bill.
You're second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Alright, next up, public comments.
Well, send on the public.
Alright, getting done, we'll move on. Next up, committee reports. And then in finance, we'll discuss here a little bit on the sewer issue. Otherwise, all the funds are in pretty good shape and in line with where we've been over the last eight to ten months at least. We don't have any major outstanding liabilities this time. Public health and safety.
I think, you got PD report with the Summers report. The only thing I had to add, the business in there is we applied for a bulletproof vest grant, and we got that awarded to us, so.
I'll tell you again, please.
Bulletproof vest grant.
Good.
We'll have enough of these funds to give the five officers that don't have brand new vests.
Sweet.
They'll get those out. They have five year shelf life, so we should be good for a while.
Good deal.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Nothing to do at this time.
You've only built the straight part and paved the roads, I mean, what's left?
I know, well.
You built the.
I'm in the works of ordering the disc golf equipment and looking into the pickleball netting and the poles and things to put in, so that'll do it till Christmas, hope.
Thank you. Planings and zoning? Public works? Yep. You want to say anything about public work?
No.
Okay. Fairs and festivals, I don't see any fair and festival orders here. So, next up is old business, discussion, consideration of possible action regarding sewer rates. We've got a worksheet in here, but I will give you what I believe the corrected numbers should be on the pricing list. Tier one, there'd be no change. On tier two.
What can you on?
And I numbered it.
I'm with you. Yeah, this.
That's way through. The rate on the tier two, the proposed sewer rate, and I don't know, since the taxes didn't go up, I don't know if that's linear or if that's a percentage. But the sewer rate should go up by $2.50 on the tier two, which would go to 30.25, making the total bill $81. The tier three would go up $4.50, which would make that 38.70 is the rate, and then the total would be 118.89. And then the tier four would go up $5.25, making it a total of $119. The sewer alone would be $119, but the total would be 5.4530. Now, that was a lot of numbers in a short time, really. Question.
Significant difference, what was there?
Yeah, yeah, I forgot to say, actually, if you're in tier four, you're pretty happy with that.
Right.
Number is less. The only number that was really more was the tier two was 75 cents higher than what you have, but all the others are smaller. And we'll get that cleaned up before, not only before the public. Not really looking, just whether approval of concept to move forward. That should generate around $45,000 a year. Assuming that there's not any major swings in utilization based on price. So, I would recommend, because we're running right now between $60,000 and $80,000, deficit would be to do it this year, and then have it approved in 12 months, that would go again. Just kind of let the folks have a chance. We're not moving it all up at once, I just think that's, in light of everything else, that's a pretty good bite, even if it is, if you want to say only $5, $10, $20 on top of everything else in the world that's going up right now.
Tier one doesn't seem like it's going to fall that much now.
No, tier one isn't going up at all. So, the folks that are in a small house, you know, if I'm a single retired person, or just a loner, whatever, and that's wrong, I don't use a lot of water. Yeah, there would be no rate increase on the tier one, it's just on two through four.
The majority of our tiers that are being used now are two or three.
One and two are the.
One and two?
Are the two highest.
Okay.
And on tier four, I think we only have 19 people in that, or 19 entities in that. I was guessing lumber plant, car wash, the laundromat.
Fire department.
Fire department, I think, if they run it through us, then we pay that when they open a hydrant.
Yeah, how many funds of that? Okay. I mean, that's kind of.
Wash tunnels and things like that. Yeah, yeah, maybe what you're going to do is station, I guess, yeah, I have no idea how much that is. But they usually fill up the hydrants, so we end up picking out. So, if there's no objections, we'll get a clean document together and bring that to the next meeting, and we can get all the proper notifications and everything.
If you went back at the ordinance, I just wanted.
Well, I mean, we've, that's one of our, I know most of the time we'll do a first reading, suspend, and then a second reading, are we better off on stuff like that, doing a first reading and then doing the second reading at the next meeting to give people time.
Should we do that? As I say, you want me to bring back the ordinance for me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
And that way, we can, we can always choose to table it if there's.
Yeah.
Next up, discussion, oh, few questions. Discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding the appointment of Ms. Mary Karen, as Ward Three Alderman person. Does there anywhere you'd like to introduce yourself to the board?
I'm Mary Karen, I live at 509 South Central, and I've lived in Buckner about 15 years of my life, and.
How many?
About 15, I lived here 12 years earlier.
I guess it was one five or five zero.
Yes, well.
So, I've got an opportunity to discuss kind of her view on the world, and she's got, she wants to see the town continue to grow and prosper and do good for the community, and.
She got.
Most important, most important, she's willing to do it.
She has skin.
So, I would ask that the board approve her to fill the vacant spot in Ward Three.
May I go up, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome aboard, we'll get you swore in, and.
You'll get sworn in there?
Yeah, let's do it. You might even get the vote then.
That's very thoughtful.
Yeah.
For leaving in freedom of democracy throughout the world, allowing increased cooperation between elected officials and other officials locally, nationally, and internationally, I, Mary Karen, do hereby subscribe to the following oath, which I affirm as Alderman: to possess all qualifications established by law for the office of Alderman; to support the Constitution of the United States of the State of Missouri; to support the provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of the fourth class on the ordinance of the city of Buckner, Missouri; to self-conduct my public and private life as to be an example to my fellow citizens; to never be mindful of my neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and to extend the same treatment I wish to receive myself; to faithfully demean myself while in office. These things I, as Alderman, do pledge to do in the interest of the citizens of Buckner, Missouri, for which our government has been established.
Congratulations. It's up to Mr. Norris.
He bites.
Not hard.
Yeah, it's third or fourth.
That push-ups.
Alright, next up, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding border, newest contract. The, we've talked about this for quite a while. Mr. Ross, you want to tell us what we're talking about here?
Yeah. So, this is the design, construction administration, and observation for the reed bed system. So, as you know, a lot of issues with slug tangling and having capacity to manage sludge, so that this would essentially have all the sludge go to the reed bed system. Water gets pumped back around with the headworks. But, Blue Springs went like 14, 15 years with their reed bed system without having to ever excavate or do anything underground. You're familiar with the, it's basically like big stocks 12 to 15 feet tall, and you burn them off once a year, but they actually absorb a lot of the nutrients and break down the sludge. You burn them off, then they come right back, and you do it again the next year. So, pretty easy maintenance, but it's designed in cells, so you don't fill up the whole thing in any one time. I think this, we had either four or six planned, so you would alternate, you know, for like two or three weeks, you pump to one, and then you switch to the next, and switch to the next, and switch to the next, and allow that, allow the system to degrade the sludge and drain the water off. So, then there's, there's really no handling of the sludge a second time, and like right now, they're, you're pumping it off, or hauling it off, and then taking it to land application. You're paying for those, basically, you pay a haul a couple of different ways. So, this would eliminate all that, and if we can get a, get 14, 15 years out of it, then it pays for itself very fast.
I believe we were paying this next budget year, I think, $100,000 to have the sludge sold out.
It costs us, yeah, it costs us $17,000 every time we do it, do it three, four times a year, easily.
And. We still got the issue with DNR on the, I think, the nitrates and phosphate issues.
Yeah, this will make a big difference in the rest of the plant, eliminating as much sludge as possible, and Wilson, over the years, has complained about he can't get rid of enough sludge. This should, to get rid of those issues completely, and should help your ammonia limits and the efficiency of the rest of the plant. So, there's other improvements in the next phase that DNR is going to require, you know, a year or two down the road, but this will take care of sludge handling for the time being, and make a few other improvements to the plant.
Which is the other reason for the rate increase, needing to make sure that we can cover? I believe that is a subsequent improvement. But it has to, I, it is, we'd like to, what I'd like is to have Mr. Ross put together a proposal for us, and we can then, once we've got our numbers in front of us, we can move forward from there.
So, the.
It's in the packet that it's.
The task order, the task order you have would be for designing that, that part of the process, and getting through DNR approvals, and going out to bid contractors, and then managing the construction side of that, what to also, to use the term loosely, not construction manager, but construction administration, so we work with whatever contractor is, you know, the chosen bidder, and take care of all the paperwork, the pay applications, doing the inspections, and all the paperwork to go back to DNR, so we take care of all that side of things. But the general contractor would be managing his project, we just work hand in hand with them to make sure that they abide by all the rules and regulations and the specifications of the project.
It's a.
In the kind of, in the about, the about range, so we're about 250,000 for the design phase, does that sound right?
So, the first step, we've got to update the facility plan, so this is, this is looking forward a little bit, but basically, update that plan to show what we're doing now and what's in Phase Two. Get that in before March 1st, so SRF, that updates your application for the next phase. So, that's in here, I think it was $8,000. Then, the big number is the design, going through preliminary and final design. They'll be surveying, we'll have to get some soil samples and stuff out there also for that. And then, I think it's 40, $50,000 on the construction administration side. So, yeah, round about, over $200,000 as a total.
May I ask, what's the purpose of the sludge samples?
So, if we can use soil on site, but there's a couple of different ways these are built. A lot of them, they just build a concrete floor, and you come in and you put different specific layers of sand and gravel and soil to grow the reeds, and then you've got an underdrain system under all that, so the water drains through it. If we can get the right soil consistency, we may be able to eliminate the concrete floors, just build it in compacted soil. So, that's one step, and then the other part is the design of the foundations of the concrete walls.
Thank you.
So, if it packs well, then we can save a little bit on concrete.
Right.
Do you have any kind of estimate on what that second phase would cost?
Of the first phase, we had a total of 1.8, and the second phase, we have a total of 3.8.
But we can do one, depending on regulation and finances, we do the two. Biggest challenge right now is, as I understand it, we keep in those love letters from DNR every December telling us about what our outflow is, and that we're in violation, and they can start finding us so much every day until we fix it, and we've been telling them, we're getting to it, we're getting to it, but we've really not got the good faith. Just, did they show the faith that we're moving forward on that?
Yeah, and I will say, even, so, we do the first phase with the reed beds, I think that's going to take a lot of pressure off of the dream of plant, allow us to do some cleaning and maintenance that they don't have the ability to do now. And then, the second phase, you're not committed, so we submit the application to DNR for 3.8 million, I think is what we had on the original application. So, we have to update that application by March 1st, and then they look at all those, and they make a decision on who gets funded next year about July. So, we wouldn't know until probably August, September, if you're funded for that year. So, realistically, it's January, February of '26, before you ever get any, your hands on any of that money. Otherwise, if you're put on the funded list, but not construction, then that's pushed back even another year. So, it's kind of a two-year process to get through that, but even if you go all the way up to the date you're ready to sign papers, you're not committed until you sign. So, if we find that we can cut that project back because of benefits that the sludge handling has done, or if DNR's, like, it's their review of your discharge permit, so, what is it, every three years, you get a renewal on that discharge permit. We've been told that they're going to increase the, or rather, they're going to decrease the ammonia limits and institute phosphorus removal. So, this is kind of, this is across the country, they're doing this for better water quality. If they require both of those improvements, then that's what this 3.8 million dollars is for. If they back off of that, maybe you could delay that a little further, but it's coming, whether it's next year or two or three years from now. I don't think it's going to go away, but maybe they'll soften the impact. So, but at least you've got a placeholder there, and you're guaranteed that that money is there once your application is approved, and if you use it, fine, if you don't, you have two years to use. So, you could push it back, we could do a reapplication in a couple of years, and then keep, keep that process going, but I said, until you sign on the dotted line, there's, there's no official commitment.
But having this project as a committed project, it replaces those ARPA dollars to that, then that also then takes the pressure off on, that commitment equals meeting the obligations so that the feds don't take that money back.
But, yeah, that would be Phase One.
Yeah, right, yeah, it is.
Yeah, so Phase One, it's the private funding, Phase Two is a couple of years down the road, that would be the SRF process.
Which is next on the, that's what I said, there's two different projects, the first one's a RE project, which is going to be us using all money, the second one is the SRF funding, which is next on the discussion, but so there's two separate projects we need to deal with.
Yeah, and we're not asking for approval for the second one, just, just to get started on the first one.
Look, the motion to approve the reed bed.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Norris, you want to second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
No barriers, no discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding the state revolving fund update.
Sorry, I jumped the gun, that's kind of what I was just talking about there at the end.
Yeah, it's a, it's a state financing mechanism that helps us. Would we have to work with, Mr. Benson, that's DA Davidson, that suffers some, but.
Right.
Because there's a cap or something on this, it's literally, they only go so high.
Right. But, yeah, DA Davidson would not be a part of the SRF, that we would have to work through. So, DNR has been asking Joe and I to have a meeting, excuse me, to get, make sure you're on the schedule to get things submitted by March 1st. So, that's where we'll update the facility plan to make sure we abide by all those regulations. And the meeting is, basically, they kind of step you through what that schedule looks like. So, like I described before, we go March for the application, it'll probably be July, August, September, before they send out the list to show who's approved for funding. And to get on the approved list, you have to show that you've got bonds passed, ordinances passed, they look at all your rate structure and finances, and so they kind of go through all that with the fine tooth comb to get to the approval stage, and then when you're on the fundable list, then you can actually move into design and then construction. But it's, like I said, it's about a two-year process to get through all of it.
What's the cap on that, on the order list?
I think we have currently 500 and, 500 and almost 61,000.
Mayor, if I could, so the, the ARPA funds.
Are fixed one.
Yeah, we've got to have, well, you've got to have a commitment by the end of this year.
Right.
The contract in place to say that those are going to be expended.
And that's what we did, essentially, they were the last motion, correct?
Yeah, to Task Four.
So, yeah, I don't know how much is remaining on your ARPA funds, but.
Yeah, okay. So, do we need to vote on the SRF?
No, we just, we keep you guys, basically, know what the process is, and, like I said, it's a two-year process. We'll be bringing you stuff, pipe for next year and a half, and like I said, orders have to be passed, and everything like that, just kind of move it forward.
Okay. Next up, discussion, consideration, and action regarding trunk or treat.
Well, I kind of discussed those people, it seemed kind of trivial compared to our tree bed plant. And I'm really happy about that, but I, you know, it was just such a big event, and the board of Aldermen didn't even get to have any say in it, and it just kind of got moved over to the school, so, anyway, I was just kind of wanting to discuss it with the board of Aldermen, and also, whether or not they felt that the fairs and festivals ought to be a committee with the city.
Well, they are.
They're not. I mean, they're a committee, but they're not, it's not like we've got the park board committee.
They're not at board level.
No, they're not at board level, that would take a vote of the people, right?
I'm not sure that, that they could be the board.
Yeah.
I'm just a vote going.
Anyway, and so what are the, Mr. Mayor, what are the benefits to having that, the fairs and festivals?
I said, they're kind of a legacy committee as far as, pretty big, me.
We kind of brought that up as a suggestion before.
I mean, yeah, I could, I could certainly make a case for making it a subcommittee in the Park Board, but I don't think that either group, I might end up losing both the Park Board and the fairs and festivals.
I got you.
Just, you're not a president?
I, yeah. That's something I'd quite discuss with this, the Park Board.
And then, before we went down that road, we want to definitely have, I don't want to blow up two things trying to fix one thing.
Yeah, well, I really would like to air it out and just say we need to get rid of all our bad blood and do things what's best for the, for the city between, between the fairs and festivals and, and whoever, because there's a lot of personal things going on that don't have anything to do with the actual things that are, that are happening with the city, so.
I know we discussed this before, and one of the things, requirements to be an actual owner.
Yeah.
Everybody had to lose residency, and one of the board members at that time did not live in city limits, and that's changed since then, but that's the reason, one of the reasons they didn't do it before.
Yeah, originally, when Dan started that, I think probably half of the folks were in the community, but didn't live in the city.
And Phyllis lived just outside of town, I like living right here, and I think she's since moved.
Okay, well, it's a discussion, I guess, everybody knows it's not happening downtown, right? Can't see the other Alderman over there, but.
The Trump retreat will be at the school this year.
If I read this letter right, it sounds like it is fairs and festivals doing it, it's just a location.
Say that, and to Mr. Walcott's point, they, I mean, I guess they don't have to bring it to us, but they didn't.
Right.
And that's why I was kind of maybe pushing it forward to something else, to where we might have a say in that.
Right.
You know? Do you understand what I'm saying, Ben?
Yeah, I think so.
Because we can't shut down.
End up with smoke.
Like a stoplight.
What?
End up with smoke, they're, if we could, it'd be a pain.
Right.
There'd be a lot of angry people.
Yeah, right.
So, I know.
Again, I thought, part of this is my fault, I said we would help, I assumed it was the city event, or I would have said something before. Leslie came to me and asked if we would have an officer there, said they were hosting at the school this year, rather than, I didn't know where it was before, but, and I said, yeah, we'll have an officer there, and I thought it was a city one, because the school's having a set one on campus grounds, so I didn't, I didn't think that this was a school one.
Yeah, because I thought it was the principal or whatever, who set the time when it was going to be. Correct.
Yeah, there could be other reasoning why they're doing it, I'm not, I mean, it'd be nice to have one of them here to tell. I'm not, I mean, it'd be nice to have one of them here to tell us, but I don't know.
Yeah, it's like, three days from the event, I think.
Yeah.
But I guess we're not, other than supplying police, we're not doing anything.
As long as the kids come out and have a good time.
Well, that's, you know, and I do, that's the whole thing, and that they're safe, and that it's as big an event as it was, as it's been in the last, last two years.
And I just wonder with, when Mr. Norris talked about the last time the event, the child getting struck, was, was that before they put that circular lot, that driveway back there? I could envision setting those candy stations up.
It was there last year, that circular lot was there last time.
Yeah, but we haven't done this at the school for quite a while. Oh, wow. I just remembered that the candy part, was it the front part of the building there where like the buses lined up?
I mean, and it's, I mean, we're not going to fix logistics, but I was thinking if they ran down around that circle, it's kind of like enough of this church, unless it's where they do it in their parking lot, and they have it, actually, they go, we drive to the drive to Trump or Tree, and you go through, and they can do candy, and when the building's driving out.
Right, it's just a number of children that'll be crossing by, they're trying to be there and...
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Well, just to clear the air, I would be open to suggestions on how to fix this, this issue, because there was blame put on somebody else as a reason why it was... And so, and there was also some other things, you know, said about the church, and that's why they, they've chosen not to get in last year. And I would just like, I like this stuff, that there's a suggestion to clear this out and move it forward to where, to where it's harmonious, I would be open to all this.
So you'd just like to be the, there's a...
I'll second that. You'd be the green.
But thank you, I think your concerns are welcome. Elected officials, come in. I'd like to thank all of you that came out to the Christmas tree dinner last weekend, or few weekends ago. I didn't, I never heard how much we raised, but I know that that one gun brought like $650.
Just over $5,000.
Cool.
Yes.
Because that goes a long way towards something. A lot of kids here in the community have a Christmas this year, so.
I would like to bring something up about public works. So I would talk to Joe about maybe that scene about how what that company that's doing our asphalt now, what they would charge us to go around and fill bottom. So we could maybe...
Worth getting a prize.
Yeah, so maybe we could get it done before, before winter opens, the ones we already have. But nice job on the streets, so, really nice job.
Is it Park Street?
Park Street, and, yeah, very nice.
Steiner Way, veteran way? Steiner Drive or Way?
Way.
They're both way.
Or Veterans Drive.
It's probably the most traveled street, but they're off, you know, besides the highways. So that's a good deal.
If no one else has anything, I'd take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Frye, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Stand adjourned.